All right, welcome everybody to our June 10th, 2021 virtual meeting of the Library Board of Trustees. And again, we are still having this meeting remotely by video conference. And for the health and the safety of all the public, we're limiting our human contact. And you can join us remotely. There is a Zoom link. If you look at the website or under the library website. And so I'd like to call our meeting to order. And
So we'll do a roll call. To see who's here. So I think I do that normally Sean would do that.
Okay. Present.
David.
Present.
Annie.
Dean.
Yep.
Dr. Molina.
Yeah. And we know that Dr. Molina is not able to be with us tonight. So and and I don't think Mayor Mahmoud has joined us yet, but she may join us. And we have Kathy and then Sean is not able Sean Fay Administrative Secretary is not able to be here with us tonight.
And he'll be of the Friends of the Library here as a guest. And Diana.
Yes.
Diana is coming on board right now.
Thank you. Sally.
What?
You are very important Sally, and I always forget to introduce you. I am sorry. I apologize.
I don't feel like I need to be introduced.
Well, everybody knows you. So yeah.
Yeah.
Are there any presentations for tonight?
No presentations.
And are there any public comments?
There were no public comments.
And are we on Kathy, remind me now that we're doing this, though, do we have live, can we do live public comments or is that only at City Council?
We haven't adopted that yet, just because we rarely have comments. I don't think it's worth the effort to figure out how to do that. I think probably, well, I'm going to mention this later, but I think probably we'll be getting back to in person meetings in the nearish future. Governor Newsom has extended the order that allows us to have virtual meetings to give people time to transition back to in person meetings. But yeah, we're not taking live comments at the Board of Trustees. Some of the other commissions that have a lot more public comment are doing that like council.
Well, I just wanted to make sure just so that if they're just so that the public knows it's not live public comments. Okay. All right, well, then why don't we move on to our action discussion items? And hopefully you all reviewed always the very thorough packet that we get from the library staff. And did you all get to review the draft minutes of our last meeting? Any questions, comments, edits, additions? All right, hearing none. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve it.
Thank you, Dave. Is there? Thank you, Dean. So it's been moved and second to approve the minutes of May 13th. Do we need a roll call or do we just?
I think we do a roll call. So for approving the minutes from the May 13th meeting, Bianca.
Yes, approved.
David.
Yes.
Annie.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Thank you.
Right, and moving on to the library operations update Kathy.
Yes, I have a very long list this this day. I don't know how it got so long, but I guess we must have a lot going on. So I'll try to go through some of these things. If you have questions, feel free to stop and, you know, stop me and interrupt me. I wanted to give you some information about our library bridged in person services and a sense of how that's been going. So we looked at circulation statistics yesterday, and that was really interesting. Overall, circulation has increased by 142%. So from May 17th through June 8th circulated 10,400 items. And in the prior 22 days, so the prior same amount of time, we circulated 4,296. So really big jump in circulation. Yeah, now that people can come inside their, you know, they pile up their big stack and off they go. So that was, that's great. We're getting a lot of circulation. We have not been really hitting capacity. You know, we've been operating at 40% capacity. Our highest day was today or no, the second highest day was today. Our first highest day was May 17th. And it's about 30 people at a time. So we are not having, you know, without, as long as people aren't able to sit and spend a lot of time, they just aren't that many people at a given time. Holds are down to about half of what they were before. So the average since May 18th is about 98 holds a day that we're pulling, which is down from, you know, 200, 200 to 300, you know, it varies obviously, but but significantly down now that people can come in and pick up their own items, pick out their own items. Takeout is not declining as much as we expected and sort of hoped. I think it's a, the people using it, it's a mix of convenience because they just like to walk up and get their stuff and it's real easy. But it's also, there are also people who have expressed that they're not comfortable coming inside. So we'll probably continue to provide that even though it's very labor intensive to have the staffing to cover it. At least for a while, the lowest number of pickups since May 18th takeout was 22, but we're averaging about 36 people a day at takeout. So we'll continue doing takeout.
Kathy, you say it's labor intensive and what does that translate to one person?
One person, yeah, we have one person stationed at the take most of the time is when we can. One person's at the takeout door and one person at the entrance where people are actually coming in.
And in addition, it blocks one door, the entrance or exit.
Correct, there's all, yeah, so the only, there's only one way to get in and out, which allows us to keep track of how many people are coming and going. Yeah. In person average daily since May 17th is about 175 people. So not bad, but obviously nothing like, you know, normal, normal statistics when it would be, you know, 600 or 700, something like that. It's interesting, library cards issued in May doubled from what we'd been doing in previous months. So we issued 104 library cards and we'd been doing about 50 a month all throughout the pandemic. So that's good. That means, you know, people who moved here during the pandemic or people who had babies during the pandemic, you know, people are coming in and getting cards. So that's great. And then I wanted to let you know that Matchmaker has slowed, slowed way down. We've only had nine since May 17th. But that's probably something, you know, again, we've learned a lot through this and and one of the services, you know, we might continue to do that for people because the people who who appreciate it, who are really busy and don't maybe have time to come and pick books with their children, et cetera, have really appreciated it. So it's much slower, which is nice because that's also labor intensive. Yeah.
When you said that the the library cards are doubling, so around the South Pasadena community, are other libraries opening? So are more people than coming to South Pasadena or is it or more libraries opening up?
We were one of the slower libraries to open. I think I think everybody is open except for Pasadena Central because of their structural issues. So that that's significant. I mean, even though all their branches are open, that's, that's a lot of people displaced. But most libraries, well, not most, I'm going to say many libraries still also like us don't have seating other than computer use. So, you know, people are using libraries all around. I don't think anybody is still closed to the public, to my knowledge. I think everybody's open to the public.
Thanks.
Yeah. So those were just some statistics so you could have a sense of how things are going. I wanted to let you know also that a little update on fine free and that process of kind of re implementing the the cycle of things are overdue and then they become lost and then they get the customer gets billed. And if the customer doesn't return the item, they then get sent to collections. So we, as you know, had, you know, extended due dates throughout the pandemic until I think July 1st was the the due date for everything that had been checked out. And then we also implemented auto renewal at the same time.
Right.
So it's it's time for us to lower the the block limit back down. We had raised the block limit so that people wouldn't, even if they had $100 in fees on their account, they could still use digital resources. So we're bringing the block back down to $25. And when we do that, we're going to have about 150 people who will get sent to the collections agency. It's not really a collections agency. It's a materials recovery service. And we've tried to, you know, we we brought the block down about three weeks ago because then we thought people would realize they couldn't use the library and that might, you know, get them to bring their books back. We also sent them notices that their items needed to be returned, but not very many people have. And and when we looked at the data, it looks like a lot of the items are items that were checked out before the pandemic. So they're, you know, things people have had for a long time. So we will be doing that and seeing if we can get those materials back or get them paid for. June 15th, that's when the big changes are coming in terms of the guidelines that we're going to be operating under. We, we know every, we know the same things you guys know about what's to be expected. Customers who are vaccinated, you know, will not have to wear masks. I believe that unvaccinated people are supposed to wear masks. Staff will, Cal OSHA will require staff to wear masks. Essentially, if you're in a, in a workplace where you're mixing with people who may or may not be vaccinated. And since we have no way of knowing, we will continue to be masked according to Cal OSHA's regulations. The one big question that's still sort of outstanding is youth and what will happen with children. They will have special guidelines specific to youth settings and schools, et cetera. Whether they'll have anything that's specific to library youth settings is is unknown. They haven't been great, as we know, about kind of thinking about libraries as as a certain type of entity. But yesterday, the county library director indicated she was going to be talking to Department of Public Health today and would try to kind of nudge them to think about library children's services and how that should look. Because for us, you know, that's really our tightest space. And that's the space that's been the busiest, you know, that's people want to get in there. So and it's in a way, it's it's even more risky than a classroom because it's, it's you have parents and children and you have many, many different households, not the same households every time. So, you know, we're a little, want to be cautious about that. So my guess is that children will, you know, people will have to be masked in the children's room regardless of vaccination status for adults. And we'll probably need to keep some occupancy limits, even if, even if the guidelines don't require them, but we'll see. We're, we're really waiting to see what comes out on June 15th. And our expectation is in the adult areas is that, you know, we'll be able to start reintroducing seating and other kinds of services. So as soon as those come out on June 15th, we'll try to you know, review them quickly and start to make some changes in services. Let's see what else. I wanted to let you know about a new resource that we have. So we had decided last fiscal year, when the budget was tight, to eliminate some of our digital resources. And one of the things we got rid of was our index to periodicals, you know, periodical literature just wasn't getting used. But seriously Dynex, which is our ILS system vendor, we're introducing a new product that provides access to research material that's not behind any firewall or paywall. So it's actually integrated into our catalog. So if you go into the catalog now and you do a search, you'll see two little tabs and you can click back and forth between the regular search results and the, I believe it's called, I think it says articles. And if you click articles, you get full text articles. And a lot of it is scholarly, but not all of it is, is, you know, incredibly scholarly. I did some searches on solar panels and, you know, nature is is one of the periodicals. So, you know, there's thousands of periodicals that they're indexing, but we're going to try that. It's a, it's a beta, we're sort of beta testing it for them. They're, they're wanting to try to get people to pick up this product. So we're going to run it for about seven months. And then if we decide we want to keep it, we can make that decision at that time. But it's nice. It's, you know, we were all a little bit nervous about getting rid of the index to the periodical literature just because when you do need it, you really need it, you know? And even if it's not very often, you know, it's hard when someone comes in. And of course, we have a million resources in our region. So it's not like there's nowhere people can go, but it's nice. So check it out. It's kind of fun. You'll see it if you go to the catalog. The author talk that Olivia hosted last night was well attended. There were 68 people registered and 30 attended live and five have since watched it, the recording. There were people from 15 different states, so people from all over interested in the topic. Olivia did a lot of really good outreach to a lot of special organizations and groups to drum up interest. And that recording will be live until the end of June, but that's, that's as long as we can leave it up per the publisher. And then the next event, which is also related to Pride Month, is an a talk by Chloe O Davis, who's the author of The Queen's English, the LGBTQIA+ Dictionary of Lingo and Colloquial Phrases. So that's June 23rd at 6:00. And it's also over Crowdcast, so people can register over Crowdcast and find it from our website. But it was a really great talk. Bianca, you came to the top last night. I was found it to be very interesting.
It was wonderful. Maya Kobe was, it was fascinating. And Olivia is really a very good moderator. She just draws the authors in. She made everybody kind of feel comfortable. And yeah, it was, it was wonderful.
Yeah, she's a, she's a graphic novelist. So it was very interesting to hear her talk about that process, you know? You know, how do you write a graphic novel? It was great. It was really good. And yes, you're right. Olivia did a great job. She's always very prepared. She has questions in case nobody asks what, you know, she's, she's got it down. So yeah, that was great. One City Many Stories is well underway in terms of planning. We're tentatively, so the the staff have been winnowing down the title options. And the plan is to have the public vote on the finalists in September, early September, so that we can winnow down to the the final one book that we'll read this year. There are five finalists, which is partly based again on on the staff's work that they've been doing, but also on availability and what we can actually get. And, you know, the programming that might be able to be associated with it. Two are nonfiction and three are fiction. So it will be interesting to see what people pick the theme and we don't have a catchy title yet, but it's sort of environmental theme, the human, human relationship to the environment. So there's some nice titles on the list. So that's coming along. The checkout kiosk, the kiosk to check out tablets or laptops or our battery packs that the friends have raised the funding for. We are, Maida is, Maida and I met to discuss and she is reaching out to some vendors to get quotes and put together kind of a matrix of what's on the market at this time. The last time that I looked, there were really only one or maybe two vendors on the market, but there are more now, not that many more, but there's maybe three vendors that look good to us for our purposes. So she's going to try to get that together and then we can kind of see where we are and see what we think is the right thing for us. There, there's quite a variety in terms of what's available. So that is in motion. Summer reading program started June 1st. We've got more than 300 people registered, readers registered, and they've already read over 830 hours. So they're reading a lot. And we had 28 people at the, at the live Wonderful Wednesday event this week, which was virtual. So those, that was good numbers for virtual, I think. And then our youth volunteers, we have basically two cohorts this summer. The first cohort, there's 17 youth. And they've already completed 180 hours of volunteer service. And then the second cohort starts next week, and I believe there's 19 of them. And then the last thing I wanted to do, I think it's the last, yeah, last thing I wanted to show you is I'm going to show you a photo. We've got new shelving finally in the children's area in the entryway for the children's paperbacks. So I just want to show you a picture. I mean, it's not the most exciting thing, but we're excited. Hang on, I don't know why it's not. Sorry. Should be popping right up. There it is. So I think it's a lot more inviting, you know? You can kind of, you know, you can see what's in the magazine section. It's just a lot roomier and more spacious and it's nice because it has these, these end caps that let you do displays. And honestly, just for finding things, just having things in order that way, you know, the spinning racks were really hard to to actually locate what you were looking for. If you were looking by call number. So that's the new shelving and Public Works did a great job for us this week putting that together. So I just wanted to show you that. And that is all I have for operations updates, but I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
The new shelving looks great.
Yeah.
It really does compared to the cow cells.
Yeah. Thank you. Yeah, we're excited. I mean, it's such a small change, but to us it really does make a difference and it just makes that kind of that entryway more.
It always felt kind of crowded and cumbersome.
Yeah, really tight and people, if you have a stroll or anything, it's really.
Open and cleaner and like.
Yeah.
I was just there with the whatever Friday, maybe it was our first time back and it was so lovely. Judy was so sweet to the kids and it was just so fun. But I think you still had the rotating Shelby. We were struggling. I didn't even think twice about it because it's always been like that. And so seeing that makes me happy and it does make a big difference, I think, for folks.
They're not as, it's not as tall. So you can, like, you can see the Politi painting much better. So yeah, it's nice.
It gives some nice continuity to the room, too. You know, it's all, it looks all kind of similar, which is not visually. Yeah. No, no, I was just going to say, anybody then have comments or questions for Kathy with operations update?
That was really a lot of information, well presented. Thank you.
Sally or Annie? Sally, yeah.
Just a question about the summer reading program and the teen volunteers. Since it's all virtual, what do the the teams do?
They are, they're doing letters and and cards and notes for the seniors. They're doing book reviews on Beanstack. They are doing promotion around town, like shocking the walk, doing, you know, messages, some of their programs, messages on the sidewalks. And I don't know what else she has them doing. I'm assuming they may have helped with some of the reading lists and and things like that.
Yeah. Annie, did you, did you have a comment, Annie?
Sure, I'll get in the queue. I, yes, really great overview on everything, going back to like one of the first things that you mentioned on the collections for the overdue books. So like it goes to the library collections. I forget what you called that person for collections, but does it at any point go forward to actually like real collections where it actually starts to put a mark on your record?
And no, no, I think in, I want to say 2008, I could be wrong about that date. The, I think at that time, the state of California, or maybe it's a federal rule. Sorry, I have information about this, but I don't remember. That's no longer allowed. This type of, this type of debt is not considered. It's not allowed to go on your record. So no, there really is no collections agency. That's why we started to call it because when you say collections, people think, yeah. You know, and it used to be you went to collection, you know, it was on your record if you had library finds. But that's no longer the case and it hasn't been for quite a while. So that's why we call it, they call themselves Materials Recovery Service or Asset Recovery Service. And basically what they do is, you know, they contact the, they do the work of contacting the person by telephone and getting them to bring the items back or come and pay their bill.
Does it eventually become a loss for us at some point?
Yeah, if they never bring it back, yes. But, you know, it's, there's no, again, because it doesn't go on your record as a collection, you know, collections agency, you know, your, your record. People sometimes just don't respond and they don't bring.
Thank you.
And I have a question or something.
Any other?
Diana.
Oh, Diana's.
Yeah, hi.
Well, there's Diana. Hello, Diana. I didn't see you on my screen.
Hi. Um, so Kathy, as of June 15th, will all capacity restrictions be lifted so that we no longer have to limit the number of library patrons physically in the library? And I walked through the library and I saw there's no chairs. Are the chairs being brought back so that people can stay? And is the six foot distancing still applicable? Could you please go into a bit more detail about how things are going to change as of June 15th?
Yeah, I'll, I'll do the best that I can. I mean, like I said, we are waiting for the county guidelines on the 15th, but our understanding and my understanding is that social distancing will no longer be required. And that masks will no longer be required for the public who are vaccinated, but it's an honor system, obviously. So people, I'm expecting a lot of people to not wear masks, but I'm also expecting a lot of people will continue. And yes, my understanding is that the capacity restrictions will also be lifted. So for the adult parts of the library, yes, I think it means that we can go back to sort of normal service. For the children's room, I don't know yet. And that's why we really need to wait to see what the youth guidelines are because they haven't given much detail about the youth aspect. They just say there will be special guidelines for youth. So yeah, we'll be making that transition back to to regular services. I met with the city manager this week and, you know, we talked a little bit about what that's going to look like. I think she seems to be on, on the, in more in the cautious side, you know, she doesn't expect us to do it on June 15th. So we'll be working on it as soon as we get the guidelines, maybe within the next couple of weeks, we'll be able to have, you know, regular services back to normal because, yeah, there's no capacity restrictions. Yeah, we should be able to get back to normal. I mean, part of the issue with the capacity restrictions in the seating, even though some libraries have been able, like Glendale, it's like one, one, one household or person per table. So you can come in and you can sit and study. But for us, if we, we didn't, because the capacity was so limited, we would have had to have some mechanism to have those people on a time limit. And we didn't think we could do it. We just, we don't have any, you know, technological resource to help us do that. And we don't have the staff to, to, you know, your time's up, your time's up. So this is better, you know, for us to just wait and then go from no seating to all seating is, is the easiest for us. So that's how I think it'll look.
So if I understood you correctly, the capacity limits will be lifted, but we won't necessarily introduce the seating right away.
Yeah, maybe give us like a week to figure it out. And but our expectation is that if the capacity is lifted and the social distancing especially is lifted, then yeah, there, they, we don't need to have the rules about seating or on seating at all. So yeah, we would be moving all the chairs back downstairs and moving the tables back and moving all of our bits and pieces around because, you know, we have shelving now where the tables go. And so we'll need Public Works to help us get.
Right. And I can tell you, there's still, I think, quite a bit of confusion regarding really what the rules are going to be as of June 15th. I know I was talking to my church's Director of Liturgy and she understood that the six foot distancing would still be applicable. So there's a lot of confusion, I think, and and I hope that There's a lot of confusion, I think, and, and I hope that, uh. The combination of the state and the county do a much better job of, of providing clear signals to the public. And the second question I have is, uh, do you have any employees that have been hired since we began? COVID such that they have not had to, um, interact with the public physically in the library? Reason I ask is because once we do open up, then, um, there's the issue of the homeless and training them. As to the library rules of conduct.
Yes, so we had, as you might remember, our big training, retraining matrix. So everybody, especially the new people, and that was partly on our minds, you know? They haven't ever worked here in normal circumstances. So there was a lot of training and information that they needed. So we all had our, we all had that very good, um, you know, homeless, mask-wearing, difficult patron training. That was really good and helpful. So I think that that was good for everybody. Um, and the employees who are new, who will be working those public desks are still in training. You know, they're not on by themselves yet. They, they would be working the desk with a more experienced person. So they have been training those since May seventeenth and we're trying to get them up to speed. But I think everybody's ready.
Are you, um, going to request that, uh, SPPD provide routine controls of the library? Or are you going to wait and see?
I, you know, I think it's something we need to talk about when you're talking about, um. It's a, it's a conversation that's happening in libraries now about when do you bring in the police? And, and when do you not do that? And, um, we've been thinking about it a bit, but haven't had really detailed conversations about it. But the idea that, um, you know, if you have patrol, police patrols, is that. Going to disenfranchise users because they are, you know, I don't know, undocumented or, or whatever. And then I, I question whether it's very effective, you know, I mean, they would, we used to have them come and they would go through the building and, um. I always envisioned that they would come in and, hey, how are you guys doing, you know, and kind of have these interactions with people. But they're not allowed to do that because it's, uh, they explained to me that, um. You know, as, as a uniformed sworn officer, they can't. They'd have to explain it to you, but basically they don't interact with anybody. They just literally walk through. And it's, it doesn't, I don't know that that really has any effect, you know?
Really? That seems inconsistent to me with maybe with the concept of community policing that I thought we had embraced.
Well, we should talk about it with them because that's changed, you know, maybe it's changed, but there, it, it basically it's, people will say, hey, I didn't do anything. Don't talk, you, you can't talk to me. Like, it, it's because, um, it can be misperceived by the members of the public. And, and that's how it was explained to me and I'm not explaining it very well to be.
I think, I think you characterized it very well because a couple of times that I've been in the library and the police have come in. They've come in and gone out so rapidly.
Yeah.
It, it's like, why did you even bother? You know, I mean, quite literally, they, they went so further than where the. Fifty cent last chance books off and walked back out.
Right, and I don't know that that's really, um, deterring any bad behavior because it's just a random visit. And the, the people you might, you know what I mean? Like, it's still, I just, I don't think it's very effective. Again, I kind of envisioned that. They would come in and say to the teens, hey, teens, how's it going this afternoon? And, you know, just kind of be a presence, but I, but they, they told me that they just can't do that because it's, um. A liability, liability is not the right word, but we, we should, we can talk to them about it.
Curious to hear what they have to say. I have to disconnect and reconnect. I'm having a computer issue that I have to try and solve before I have a crash. In about two minutes, I hope.
Okay. So, yeah, that's, so the city, um, we're having our, um, citywide equity. Inclusion, diversity training is coming up. Um, so that might come up, you know, that kind of conversation might be part of that. And, and I think once we go through that, and I don't know exactly what the police are doing with this consultant. I think they're doing a little bit even more intensive type of work with her perhaps. Yeah, it's definitely something we should talk to them about, but our feeling right now is, no, we, we, we call them if we need them. But not just to walk through because it just doesn't seem to, I, I don't think it's, uh, I don't think it's really a deterrent. Yeah, that's sort of where we're at, but I'm willing to, yeah, if you have other thoughts, I'm happy to consider.
I am concerned regarding their response because it is inconsistent with community policing, but I'll take that up separately with the.
Yeah.
Chief Solinsky.
And again, I may, I may be mischaracterizing or misstating it, but. We, I had that conversation with the patrol officer about, well, how, oh, how come, could you, you know, how come you don't talk to anybody when you come in? And they said, oh, we can't do it. So. Other questions on operations, anything? We will make sure as soon as we get the guidelines, you know, we'll, we'll try to make decisions about what's happening as soon as we can. And get that information out to the public right away. So.
Just to, one question and one comment, and the comment is to the conversation we're just having. I don't know if we've looked into like other social service providers too, just to serve that function of kind of checking in or whatnot. Around or just kind of being a resource in case any of the staff feel like they need to intervene. But there are other like nonprofit organizations that provide like a connection to folks.
Well, we, we work closely with the, the team in the police department that provides these kinds of services. And we put in our own reports to the Los Angeles County Homeless Authority. We actually, they stopped by today because we had put in a, put in a ticket, I don't know, last week, I think, and they came today. And, you know, can't find the person because the person's gone now. And, um, so it's, it's a challenge. I mean, there, there are people in the city, we have, we have grant funding so that we have a, um, a social worker that is. You know, we're, we share them with Sierra Madre, I think, or Arcadia.
Arcadia.
And so, you know, we, we do have some resources, but it's sometimes hard to con- connect them. Especially if the, the customer is outside and not inside, which they have been lately. So, yeah, I mean, we definitely, we don't call the police unless there's. Yeah, I mean, if we have something where we don't have any resource, we can't get, um. The Los Angeles County folks to come out or Union Station, then we might call the police. But, um, again, you know, people aren't committing any crimes. The police can help if they can help, but, you know, they can't always come when we need them because they have other things that they have to do. That are more serious and more, you know, important.
Well, I think, I think in the future, a good conversation that we, that maybe the city. We need to think about the library parks and the open spaces in general. I think, um, there's that line between the open spaces are for everybody. But if you have, uh, certain elements in the open spaces that are scaring away, uh, families or, uh, young people. Or people are, don't feel comfortable, then I think that's, that's, that's what we have to talk about with, with the city. Because there's a lot of open spaces, um, that maybe you don't feel comfortable going to. Like, you know, the nature park.
Right.
You know, uh, yeah, so, you know, and even early, early morning.
Right.
Here at the library, uh, you know, there's still, there's people who camp out, you know, early and they get up early in the morning and. And they're here. And so I think, uh, we're all pretty cautious. And I don't know, because I don't know Garfield Park enough, but I do know like the library park and I have been down to the nature park. Where you, you gotta have to be on alert. And, and here that, at the library park, we all kind of watch out for each other. But it's, I think it's just a conversation that cities need to start having in general. I don't know what the solutions are.
In my experience, Bianca, having, you know, going around early in the morning, running and walking itself. There are less people, in fact, frequently zero people in Garfield Park. And put as many as anywhere between one to three people in the library park. I mean, in the library, next to the library, more so than in the park, they're sleeping.
Yeah, and I think that, um, with this particular issue that's outside the library with the, the. At the picnic tables with the excess baggage and stuff. What I found when I was trying to work on that with the police department is the park's ordinance doesn't give us much to work with. So that, I think, is a bigger conversation. And, and I'm sure that it's, it's a tricky thing. Because, you know, the homeless advocacy folks are, are, are not going to want to see changes to the ordinance. That appear to be, you know, targeting people or, um, you know, disenfranchising people. But, uh, there, it's worth a discussion. It's worth looking at. I mean, some libraries, um, in Glendale, for example. Their rules of behavior apply inside and outside. So it's like the, they apply to the interior and then the, the area around the outside. And so if we were applying our inside rules to the outside, then people wouldn't be allowed to have six giant. Suitcases and bags and things of stuff and leaving them overnight and all of that kind of stuff.
Well, and I think one thing that, um, this pandemic has showed us is that a lot of people want to be outside. They don't have yards, they don't have spaces, they live in apartments or they live in a crowded household with many people. And I know living across from the library, it has been lovely seeing more and more people using the library park. I mean, um, uh, young, young people, families are really using it and I'd like to encourage that. And you, you'd hate to have it where people don't feel comfortable, you know, sitting out. And, you know, people are bringing picnics, they're bringing blankets, they're bringing chairs. It's, it's been lovely, you know, at all hours of the day, people are gathering outside of the library park and.
Frank, frankly, it's, it's, I, I can't, I'm at a loss for words when I think about what that woman does. In taking fifty percent of the seating away from people. And in actuality, it's almost a hundred percent because some people won't even go there because they're concerned. What's in those bags and what's going on there? It's, it's something that the city really needs to take a look at and I, I, I don't know who to call. Maybe Mayor Mahmood, you can steer us in the right direction if you, you, you know, we're talking about.
Yes, um, this is a, a woman that sometimes sleep in front of, yeah, Lafayette de Grande as well. And she alternates. If that's a different one?
It's a different person. This person sleeps in the, uh, on the L Central side of the new unified school district building. But she sits on a, a picnic ba- bench in front of the library every single day, all day long.
She's not necessarily there, she will leave her stuff there. And, and I don't know where she goes, but, you know, you will frequently see her not there, like the other night when I went by and, uh. But her stuff was still there.
I think the park's ordinance should be updated to say no unattended baggage. I mean.
It's a security issue.
I mean, since nine eleven, nobody should, so that seems like, to me, that seems like the easiest, least controversial change. You could possibly make to the park's ordinance that would, um, make a big difference, especially in, in that particular case.
Well, uh, again, again, I really think this is a, a, a citywide issue for all open space. You know, because we do have, we're starting to get maybe some new pocket parks. So I think the city probably needs to look at it as a whole. And then, of course, the library would be engulfed in that too, but I, I just, um. Yeah, I just don't want to, you know, I, I know we have a, a big agenda and this issue comes up a lot. So I, I, you know, just keep your thoughts and, and maybe at an, at Diana, you can bring it back to the city as a whole. That this probably needs to be looked at and then you.
Are we close? Can I just say something just because this is being recorded to you?
Yes, it is.
Individuals experiencing homelessness also have a right to certain things too. And the right for me as a family to be able to have open space when I live in a home, I have a job, I have a paycheck. I've had the privilege of being where I am right now. Yes, I have a right, I have a right to the park. That individual experiencing homelessness with whatever has gotten that person there has just as much of a right to that space. And so I just want that to be clear that they are a resident of the city if they're taking space here. And so to me and my perspective to this board, like, I understand public safety, public health needs and those things should be addressed. But the human humanity of that person is still real and I want us to be able to hold that as a city. Because I think there's a lot of folks who believe in that truly and how we address this tension of what this is. And whether families need to also understand what makes them feel safe and to be able to be comfortable in that situation. So that we can all respect each other is, is something to think about too. So I just wanted to offer that given this is being recorded for everyone.
Well, yeah, no, and, and, and Annie, you're right. Remember homelessness is not a crime. So we have to, you know, we have to remember that. But I think, uh, uh, we need to look at the, the big, the, the social pictures and we're, we're really hoping. That the city, I think, the city is looking at, um, a crisis intervention program or something like that. So.
Is, yeah, there's an, an interest in it. I don't, I, at this point, it is, um, too expensive. Because in order to be successful, it has to operate on a twenty-four seven basis. And the city cannot afford to staff that on its own. So it depends upon finding willing partners. And we know that the San Gabriel Valley Council of Governments is currently. Has hired a consultant there, there's, um, a, a chief's, police chief and other, um, public employees group. And then there's a community advisory group and then there's the consultants. And I understand that a report is supposed to be released, um, it's anticipated in September. But I'm very pleased to tell you that just, um, last Tuesday of this week, so just two days ago. The LA County Board of Supervisors voted to, um, require the staff, its staff. To report back within sixty days to, um, to provide recommendations. On how it can significantly staff up its mental health crisis response unit. Because presently, I understand according to the, the motion, which I have and I'll forward to anybody that's interested in reading it. Apparently, it is only fully staffed during regular business hours. It is lightly staffed, it sounds like. From five PM until two PM and it has absolutely no staffing between, I think it's the hours of two to six or two to eight PM. So the supervisors know this is something that, um, definitely needs attention. And I'm hoping that, um, with the prospect of county funding, that this is something that can get jump-started. But having said that, the city is still very interested in exploring whatever, um, that the San Gabriel Valley Cog comes up with. It's just that I, it's going to take time because you're going to need to form a joint powers authority. That, which is a separate legal entity, that agreement has to be negotiated and then you need to hire staff. So it's going to take some time, but, um, this is an issue that we're very much interested in. But, but it's just going to take some time.
And I think, um, I don't know if you guys are aware of the group in town, the Care First Group. Who have put together a proposal for the city with some suggestions about how to use maybe some of the federal, um, American Recovery Act funds. And, um, they're very focused on these issues and how can we, how can we help people? And we have tried to help, uh, connect the person that, that's outside many, many, many times. And have met with her many, many times and, um, you know, it's tough. Because we, as, as staff, we hear from people who are upset. Because they, they don't, they can't use a space that's supposed to be for everyone. But it's being used by one person every day for months and months and months. So it's, it's certainly tricky and, and obviously, yeah, that's, she's not committing any, any crime. She's not breaking any rules. So that's why she's spending her time there. But, you know, we need to think about whether, like, like Annie said, what are the public safety and the public health issues? But, you know, we need to think about whether, like, like Annie said, what are the public safety and the public health issues? Um, and do we need to think about those and and try to figure out some way to manage it? But um, it's 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 tough.
It particularly tough when she refuses to take.
What's that, David? Sorry, say that.
Particularly tough when she refuses to take any help or or assistance and believes that she has the right to to take that whole space.
Bianca and I are both involved with the San Gabriel Valley um the initiative that, you know, the study that they're doing, Sally, uh Bianca's on the, what is it, the community forum?
Yeah.
And then I'm supposedly part of the um advisory part, yeah, the advisory group or something. Um, they haven't, there hasn't been a lot of communication, so I don't quite know what my role is, but um I'm hoping something good comes out of that, you know, I'm hoping, I I I watched something where um one of the the county folks said, if people aren't taking the help, there's something wrong with the help that's being offered, not the person, you know, I mean, what is it that then we need to offer something different? If what we're offering is not acceptable because it's not safe to the person, they they aren't willing to give up their possessions to to get housing, you know? I mean, I think that we we as a society need to uh look at this and try to make some major changes, so.
Yeah, it's a big, it's a big issue, so, but this was a, this was a very thoughtful, good conversation, so thank you, everybody, and uh, and this will be coming up again in a lot of forums in the future.
Yeah.
And so let's move on with our agenda. Uh, so our uh twenty-one, twenty-two budget update. That's our next one.
Yeah, that's that's, so I want to, um, I sent you guys in an email, I sent you copies of some of the comments um that were made at the city council meeting. Um, and lots of uh folks here on this, in this meeting made comments. Um, and so I met with the city manager and I, Diana, the packet came out, but I didn't get a chance to look at it, but I my understanding is that they've increased our part-time budget uh by sixty-four thousand dollars, which is a lot. Um, it was three hundred thousand, and the purpose of that is to help us have enough staff to keep the library open the seven days a week. Um, you know, the Sunday and, you know, basically, that's going to help us do that. The question of the full-time position will be revisited mid-year. Um, I I did, like I said, I did meet with the city manager and talk to her about our needs and what that's all about, and and she is um you know, interested and sympathetic. She's a big library supporter, she she um she was responsible when she was in Santa Clarita for their big, when when Santa Clarita stopped being a county library system and became um a local system, she built that building. Um, so, yeah, and she's a big library user, she worked at Roman, so she's we were excited to to find out that she's definitely um has an interest in the library and and I think.
My my concern i- is that um a- and I'm shocked because a- as I said to one or two people, oh my God, I agree with Chris Bray. Uh, is that one of the signs of the apocalypse? But, you know, we need to, as we've mentioned before, and I'm sure we'll talk about more, we get to um renew Measure L next year. And it's going to be quite challenging to do that with this legacy of the uh if, it it, because the the noes will say if the city won't live up to its own obligation and its own promises, why should we believe that anything will change if we continue to give these funds? So uh it it's it's just a very challenging standpoint um to to have this firebrand, so to speak, uh who has taken up an arrow of uh, hey, the city has lied to us about the library.
And okay, could I get a clarification as well, Kathy? When when they say it will be revisited uh at the halfway point of the year, wh- what that is, is the end of this year, right? You mean the fiscal year, right? And so if you revisited it then.
Say that again?
If you revisited then, I'm I'm saying like December, January timeframe, so.
Yeah, correct.
You're you're essentially pushing it out of this year's budget completely. Because by the time you get through the machinations and assuming they approve it, which they would probably, you know, not get it in for this year. I mean, it it just wouldn't, I, you know, we'd be lucky to get someone in two to three months later after the approval, which pushes it to this time next year.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know how long it would take to recruit someone um and how long it would take to do whatever you know, logistical things we would need to do with the city, but it's not a, it's not a new uh classification. So it's an existing classification, so um and I don't think the Public Employees Association would have an issue with it because it's adding a position, not taking one away. Um, but yeah, there are some logistics that happen to be be handled for sure.
Kind of building on Dean's comment, but comment in saying that, that that is basically saying you're not going to get it this year, in two thousand and twenty-one, don't expect it this year. And you may be lucky if you get it mid-year next year.
I don't think that's what she's trying to communicate. I think she genuinely thinks that at mid-year there's a possibility that we could find the funding and and, you know, approve it and then move forward. Um, yeah, I mean, it's not going to, it would.
It can also take various forms. For example, it doesn't necessarily mean a new recruitment. It could take the form of converting what is currently a part-time position into a full-time position. So you don't necessarily, I know I've met with the city manager um today over the budget, and she was impressed by um the public comments that came through. And um she wanted to show responsiveness to them. Um, the problem is, the city is understaffed in a number of different um departments. The library is not the only one, there's, there's a number, uh unfortunately, we have been understaffed. And because we really don't know what to expect in terms of revenue, you know, we don't know how quickly people will return to their pre-COVID spending habits. Um, it's been particularly difficult to anticipate what our revenues for the upcoming fiscal year will be. So if, in fact, for example, um uh Kathy decides that she wants to convert a part-time position to a full-time position, then if the funding is made available, um and that would not occur probably until until February, I would assume, because everything is thirty days afterwards. And you wouldn't close the books halfway through until December, so that means that we wouldn't really know what the revenues are until January. And so I don't anticipate that it would be brought to council for approval until February. But um it could take almost immediate effect, just depending upon how the additional funding is um used.
Man, would would that mean then the part-time uh position would have to be relinquished?
Yeah.
So the part, so basically you go down one part-time position.
Uh, but, well, you're converting a a part-time to full-time. It.
Gaining, we're 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 still having less than we had before. Because if we have nine, we have nine part-full-time, and I don't know what the number is on part-time now. And we go to ten full-time, but one less part-time, we've only gained a a half-time employee. We haven't, we haven't gained a full uh uh employee in terms of uh service hours. So I think we're still going to have an issue there, and and I I would caution the argument of we don't know what the revenue is going to look like and when people are going to come back, because there was much ballad who made recently about the fact that our revenue was actually much higher than previously anticipated from some of the uh the major revenue sources uh through the pandemic. So it it's it's kind of a a seesaw there saying, hey, we got all this money, oh, we don't have any money. Um, uh, so that's a challenging argument to make, I think.
I would never say we have all this money. You will never hear that from my lips, that from my perspective, that is not true. Our needs so far outweigh um our resources. Um, it is, I will tell you right now, in planning, they are so snowed under, I am really concerned about employee retention. And we've had employees just recently leave, we we just counsel in, I think it was May, um voted to convert a part-time position in planning to a full-time position. And we had hoped that the person that was working part-time would stay on for full-time. And she decided to leave for, I think, another position in Stanton. And I really wonder whether or not it's just because the the workload is so crushing. Planning is just has a lot of um current activities underway and more to come. Um, so we are, and we have a number of um metro projects that are coming up. We currently do not have enough staff, we don't have the capacity to administer the public works contracts to oversee the work that's done, that's being done, to make sure that we hold the contractors accountable. We have multiple, multiple needs throughout our departments, unfortunately. And you know how strong a proponent I am at the library, but um this is the best we can do now, and we really are not at it it's my feeling, we really don't know how the economy, how quickly it's going to take the economy to rebound. And what I'm hearing, um just from Kathy's report earlier about people's reticence to return to um the library, they still want to continue, the checkout service reinforces that uncertainty.
Uh, well, I have a question, uh, two questions. Um, where where is the part-time money going to go to? The eighteen-hour positions or the twenty-eight-hour positions?
So that that remains for us to to decide, so it's possible that so when we talked about, I've talked about this with the finance, uh interim finance director. Um, if what our need is, is that we need someone of a certain level of responsibility who can be in charge on Sundays, um, we don't have that type of position. I mean, we, you know, well, librarian might suffice, but um so we need to decide, Barb and me and I need to, once the budget is approved, or even before, if we think it's going to be approved, we need to start thinking about how we need, what this means. And it really is about staffing, it's not about filling the technological need that that we see the full-time person doing. Um, so it depends, we it they, we don't know yet, it might be clerks, they might be libraries. So, you know, we might pull in a library associate, it depends on on what we, what we find out. Once we really look at the the staffing, you know, we have a whole complicated spreadsheet about when we need who and what we need and and where are the gaps, so we really just need to think about it and see. Um, you sixty-four thousand is a lot of money, so we have to see what that looks like. Um, and whether, what what exactly our need is, so.
And then my my second question is, um, is this a time then to to seriously think and revisit the hours of operation, the open hours of operation? And a couple of meetings ago, you know, when things were, you know, we weren't so sure. You know, we had that serious thought about maybe the hours of operation, and and I don't know if we need to to re- to revisit that.
I don't think it's going to come to that. I mean, I I I think, again, sixty-four thousand dollars is a lot of money. So um I I would still like, I think we would like to consider closing at eight o'clock instead of nine o'clock because that last hour is just um not not used uh very much. But I I think with that, with this funding, I don't see a problem staying open seven days a week. And I think to Dean's point and concern about Measure L, that's what people would notice. If we cut hours, they're going to notice. If we don't have a technical librarian, they're not going to know that. They they're not going to have any, I mean, unless commenters in the in the community are are, you know, beating that drum so that people think about it more. But um I think that i- if we can keep the library open the seven days a week, um, that will make people very happy. And I think with that amount of money, we should be able to do that.
So Kathy, when when you say keep the library open, are are you um inclined that that you're going to go back to pre-pandemic hours where it's open earlier in the day? And and people can come until, say, eight o'clock at night on certain days?
Yeah, we go back to our regular hours, um with the exception of those four late-night hours. So eight to nine, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. So instead of fifty-seven hours a week, we'd be fifty-three hours a week. And we could even consider, um, I mean, on Sunday, we're only open from one to five, but the staff are here all day. I mean, it's a productive time for them, but if we really don't want to go under fifty-seven hours, or we want to try to, whatever, we can we could, um, you know, if we close eight to nine, we could open at eleven on Sunday or something. So again, we need to look at it and actually look at the numbers and see how much it would cost to do this versus that. And and really just look at it mathematically. Um, but yeah, our intention is to go back to our regular hours. I mean, again, right now, the demand is low, but I think once people can sit in the library again, demand is going to increase. Even with the reticence that some people have about coming inside, um, you know, we will need to go back to to more hours. Right now, it's not been an issue because we don't even have that many people when we are open. But but very soon, it's going to be getting back to normal, hopefully.
Well, will that be, then that will be, uh, can we put that on as a a discussion, action discussion item for then the next month's agenda?
Yeah, absolutely. By by, I mean, for sure, by next month, we'll have figured out how we think we should move forward. Okay.
And Kathy, that one FD that is servicing the takeout service right now, if that person was freed up from that and two doors were now allowed open, and you don't have to count people in and out.
Yeah.
That helps a lot, huh?
Huge, yeah, that's huge, just for, yeah, that's huge. Um, one thing I want to share with you guys, and I'm, I'll send these statistics, I was looking, um you know, we submit our data to the state every year, and then the state submits our data to the IMLS, which gets the data from all around the country. Um, so I was pulling data down to look at that, and it's really interesting. If you look at libraries that are comparable to us in size in California, size and circulation. So, you know, heavily used libraries, um while we are very, we're at the bottom in terms of funding per capita, funding per visit, funding per everything. But as a percentage of the total city budget, we're on the either middle or higher end. So the bottom line is, we, the city doesn't have as much money as other cities. You know, we, if if six point eight percent of the city budget in South Pasadena is for the library, there are other um towns that what they they they, it's less, you know? So it's not that the city isn't, they're they're funding us comparably to other cities. It's just there's less money to use. Um, so I can sh- I can send those to you. It's really interesting to see that, I was surprised to see that. Um, to see how low our our city's budget is compared to some of these cities that are similar. Um, and and the fact that our city, I mean, it would be outrageous to to give the library ten percent of the city's budget. I mean, that, nobody does that, you know, we're we're actually right in there in terms of getting our fair share of the city budget. Um, it's just that the city budget is small.
That would be something to share with us. Thanks, Kathy.
Yeah, I'll I'll get that for you, Sally.
Just, this is a a point um I struggle with all the time because people, even in our own bodies here and in the friends um, don't realize, don't, they think we're a rich city. We're a nice city, we're highly educated residents and well-off residents, but we really are very poor. I've been, I've known that since I've worked here and saw how little there was for each department, and Diana knows too. It's, it's outrageous, it really is. And it's really, for the library, they have been suffering for ten years probably. And uh not just planning and finance, but the library really has with the facility, with the resources, with the demands, you said the highest use, um, it, we just do not have, we can't really afford ourselves.
Exactly.
Can't.
No, it's true.
Can't.
And I think that, I mean, I'm new to the city, obviously, but it seems to me that with with measure, with the seven. No, it's true. And I think that, I mean, I'm new to the city, obviously, but it seems to me that with, with measure, with the seven-ten freeway. Finally kind of put to bed, you know, there's just this huge ballooning of development and, and the planning, you know, the planning department. And frankly, it doesn't do the library any, any good when the city departments that we rely on to get, to, to help us operate. Don't have enough people, you know? I mean, if, if public works is understaffed or finance is understaffed. I would love help with the parcel tax stuff, but. The finance doesn't have any time to help with that. So, um, you know, it's, it's to all of our benefit to have those departments functioning properly. And I'm hopeful that we can find a way to get that full-time position. And I, I, I don't know that I. I don't, Dean's thinking that it's sort of. It would still be, i- if we keep 10 full-time people and our current part-time budget, not, not including this special sixty-four thousand dollars. We would be adequately staffed, you know, we would be in very good, good shape. So.
So this not having this person is going to impact the kiosk in any moving forward technologically, wouldn't you say?
Well, I think that what, you know, we need to prioritize. So there are technological things that the, that don't. Aren't as noticeable to the public or wouldn't have as large of an impact on the public. So we're gonna prioritize the, the projects that the public will benefit them. So the kiosk is at the top. You know, Wi-Fi hotspots would be at the top. Implementing our analytics, uh, that we, the pack analytics package that we have for our backend. No, that's gonna be lower priority. So.
Kathy?
Yeah.
If I, if I, I, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but what I'm curious to know about, because you, you've mentioned it several times that. You know, to, to really pull ourselves kicking and screaming into the modern world, we need that backend.
Yes.
Um, so if we're not investing in it. What are we, what are we losing out on? And are we going to be backsliding on any gains that we have made recently? If we're not continuing that investment at the level that we should be?
Um, I think we, we've done so much since I came. I mean, we've done, we, we being Barb mostly and me, but mostly Barb. I, I think that if the, if the, if position is vacant for a shorter term, it's okay. We have, we have so much to do all the time that, um, I don't, I don't think there's anything. You know, if this position, this technical position doesn't happen for six months or something. I don't think it's gonna have a, a long-term impact or even necessarily, again, much of a short-term impact that, that would impact the customer.
Okay, that, that's just, my concern is that. You know, establishing that backend, that, that platform on which we build everything else. If there's cracks in that platform, whatever we build is at risk. So that, that's just my concern.
I don't think there, I, I wouldn't say that there are cracks in that platform. There are opportunities that we're not exploiting. I mean, there, there are things that we could be doing that, that we haven't done. But I don't think there are things, I mean, again, long-term, yes, we have a succession planning piece of it. But in the shorter term, I, I don't see that we're gonna, you know, fall back.
That, that, that's just my concern is that, you know, it's great. And yes, a- and to my, my prior point for measure L, we definitely want people to see, hey, here, the windows are shiny. But we also wanna know that the floor is solid underneath us. Uh, so that, that can be something that we, we continue to pitch, but we have to be keeping the windows shiny. If we're going to be able to go back and go, hey, look, we need to continue to, to invest, so we need this money. And if we don't have that money going forward, we can't not, just can't invest, we can't keep the windows shiny. So i- it's just gonna be a balancing act and, and having a, a firebrand, you know, yelling and screaming about it, uh, is gonna be a challenge. We've been very lucky the last couple campaigns with no organized no.
Good, that's a good point, Dean. All right. Well, I'm sure there'll be lots more about, about the budget, but.
Diana's got her hand up.
Oh, Diana, sorry, Diana, yes.
Uh, I just wanted to add, um, Kathy, at one of our recent meetings. I, Sally, thank you for bringing up the, the facilities and equipment expense fund. There was a question as to whether or not those could be used within the library for special projects. And today I confirmed that that is the case. And we have over two million dollars in that fund, so I just wanted to share that information with you.
Two million? Is that?
It's over two, we have over two million dollars in the facilities and equipment.
So these things, are you talking about the developer, the fee, the growth requirement fee? That's what we're thinking.
Growth requirement fee account, Diana, is different from the facilities, that the 105 facilities and equipment. So there's a, there's an amount in the growth development fee account that's different from the facilities and equipment account.
Five hundred thousand, right?
What's that?
You say it was five hundred thousand in the growth requirement fee?
I don't, I'm, I'm gonna try to open this right now while, while you guys are talking, but I don't wanna take too long.
And we also acc- access this other fee, the, um, the facilities and equipment fund?
Diana, yes, yes, Kathy, Kathy needs to make a request to the city manager. Um, but there is, like I said, over two million dollars in there. That is specifically intended to upgrade equipment and facilities.
Sally, I thought I had those numbers. I don't have them. I'll have to send them to you later. But yes, uh, for, so for example, we're, we're gonna ask the council to appropriate some funds from that facilities and equipment. Fund to, to deal with the HVAC things related to COVID. So I had never heard about that fund before. But that is, that is a different thing than the growth development fee account, and there's money in there too. But, but it's not, it's not that much. I can't remember. Sally, I know we talked about it, but I can't remember. I'll send you guys an email.
I have it somewhere, yeah.
So, yeah.
Okay. Again.
Well, that's good to know.
Any other comments related to then, uh, the budget update?
I just wanted to quickly let you know that, um, I've got four bids from parcel tax administrators. Um, and I'll be looking at those in the coming week and going over those with, uh, the finance director, just to get her, her input. But we should have a, 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 a parcel tax administrator in time for our parcel tax this year.
And I know, uh, the next council meeting, uh, June 16th, and I already looked at the agenda, the budget is on that again. So if there's any other public comment, uh, you know, I'm sure we'll be hearing more from people about the budget.
So are we just going to accept this, um. Part-time, you know, replacement? For the budget, the sixty-four thousand?
I mean, you guys have to just, I think you have to decide for yourselves, but from my perspective, I think it's. I think it's a generous, uh, statement. I, I mean, she, she definitely responded to the comments. And she does believe the library is critical. And I, I think she truly needs to revisit our full-time need. So I personally am very grateful for those funds. They're gonna make a huge difference for staff morale, um, you know, to have enough people on the staff. Where when somebody calls in sick, you don't have to not do everything you had planned to do that day. Because now you have to go do what that person was supposed to do. But, so to me, it's a great stopgap to allow us to offer full hours to the community. And continue to provide the, the services we already do provide. Um, and continue, you know, making progress forward. So that, that's what I expressed to the city manager, that I was, I was appreciative of the consideration and the.
Oh, no, completely agreed with you, Kathy. I wanna be very clear. I'm not, I'm not, um, castigating the, the funds and saying that, you know, it's, it's short shrift in any way. I'm also very grateful that we've been able to have that stopgap of part-time employees to sort of fill in the blanks. But it is just a stopgap of part-time employees to fill in the blanks, which is great that we have. I'm not, I'm not loo- looking the gift horse in the mouth in any way. Uh, it's just, there, there is, there's, there's more to do.
Maybe that's the comment, Sally, you know, if the friend.
Exactly.
Comment and, you know, we appreciate.
A reminder, uh, this is just, you know, to plug the, the hole, yeah.
Yeah, I took, I took some notes too.
Okay.
But, yeah. And I think what's, um, uh, what's good to hear is that this new city manager, uh, has got this interest in libraries and, uh, and she, and. And also what I'm hearing is that she listened to public comment and then reacted on it. So that's, uh, that's very positive to hear. Because in the past, not all the city managers has responded well to city, uh, to public comment. So that's something, um. Yeah.
Yeah, it's also, it's, it's also one thing to, um, respond well and another to then take action. So it's, I, that's, as you said, Bianca, that, that's very heartening to see. And hearing that she worked at Vromen's, so she actually understands and, and has appreciation for. Cause there's lots of retail jobs you can take. You don't go work in a bookstore unless you want to work in a bookstore.
Well, I'll, I'll send her a book of Ron's poetry.
There you go.
He would like that.
From the library.
I think she would like that.
Um, okay, well, speaking of poetry and art, uh, number six is our art display policy. So Kathy has a, a little new update on that.
Yeah, so, um, we've talked before about the need for, for two types of policies. One is a, an art display policy that would describe, you know, help give us some parameters for, for what type of art we. Display either inside or outside, and also, uh, donation policy, so that we have some criteria to use when we're offered, uh, works of art. To decide whether it's really an appropriate gift to accept or not. And in particular, we're, we're, uh, the issue of the Black Lives Matter, um, anti-bias club. The South Pasadena High School Anti-Bias Club mural is sort of back on the table. Back in, uh, August 2020, the Anti-Bias Club presented their proposal to the city council. And there was a lot of talk about the location of where this mural should go. The library, uh, wall facing diamond was mentioned. But, um, it seemed like after that, the, the, it kind of pivoted to the side of city hall near the gas station. So that was the last that we had heard of it for a while, but my understanding is now that there's, um, maybe some difficulties with that gas station location. So the Anti-Bias Club has reached out to the library again to, to say specifically, I, um, I have it quoted here. So I could tell you, they're, you know, very thoughtful. Contact, contact from them. Um, they said, we have developed a design specific to our top choice location, the west side of city hall. However, there are some potential issues with that location being adjacent to the gas station. That is why we wanted to reach out to you to see if the west wall of the library building near the big tree could be another potential location for the mural. Uh, we understand that approval for the library wall would require going to the board of trustees. So at this time, we just wanted to see if that group or any other decision-makers at the library were open to the idea of the mural. So what I answered to them was that, um, we really can't even. Think about that type of proposal until we have some kind of a policy. Um, so I think that, and, and Bianca, I know you have thoughts about this too, but I, I, I would like to see us develop that policy as soon as we can. Um, I've reached out to other library directors. Diana?
No, go ahead. I just, when you finish, I have a comment.
Yep, so I, I reached out to the library directors to try to get, you know, examples of policies that they use. Um, so we'll see what we get. So we hopefully wouldn't have to start from scratch. But I think it's, you know, it's a, it's a big decision and we need to think about. You know, in general, do we want murals on the outside of the library? Um, and if, and if we are okay with that, how do we decide which murals go on the outside of the library? So it's, it's a complicated issue, but I, I feel like we can't really, um, make a decision about this proposal. Without having some kind of policy in place. Diana, go ahead.
Yeah, and I was just gonna say, and, um, quite frankly, this is not clear in my own mind, but I know. The, the issue of the mural is being returned to the city's public art commission. And basically, the, the problem, um, is that the students and the artists had intended for the mural to be interactive. Where people would stand in front of the mural and actually become a part of it without realizing that. They're inviting people to come onto private property. And so that represents potential legal issues for the city, potential inverse condemnation, potential tort liability. If somebody is standing there and gets hit by a car, it's just a mess. So, um, the, the question that I have that I don't think we have really given sufficient thought is. Where, who ultimately has the decision? As I recall, um, the Public Arts Commission makes recommendation to city council, but the city council ultimately approves. Um, but in this instance, you've got the potential for concurrent jurisdiction. And I don't know that the Public Arts Commission does not have jurisdiction over the library. And whose call, whose determination is primary in the event of, of a potential conflict. Um, is something quite frankly, I have not thought of, but I, so I just wanted to raise that ambiguity, um, for you.
Absolutely. I, I looked at the ordinance today, the, the trustee or, you know, I mean, it's not clear who, who gets to decide. It's probably city council, to be honest, ultimately. I mean, you know, the, this board could recommend to you no or yes, but I think it's probably city council.
David might be able to, to weigh in on this because he was on the, the trustees when, uh, Howard Specter and I were presenting. Uh, the idea of a mural on the library. And as, as I recall, David, you probably have a, a different viewpoint of it, cause you were on this side of it. But as I recall, we came to the library first, and then we were gonna go to the, um, heritage society. And then with the blessing of both of those parties, we would go to city council. I think that was the order of operation. Diana, do you remember?
That's, no, that's right. And the problem, Dean, is that in the meantime, the Public Art Commission has been formed. Which was formed specifically for the, um, purpose of determining what public art goes where.
So, but my question then is, where do we, does it then start with us again? So would it go us, heritage, public arts? In, in that order, or would we be off the table? I'm confused.
Yeah, when, when, when we did the, uh, Ray Barra Bradley window. It went us and then in parallel, the, the, uh, arts and the heritage. I, I spoke to those folks in parallel and then eventually, you know, we came with formal presentations. And I, I don't think we ever had to do any kind of presentation to the heritage, to the, uh, Ray Bradley. They determined it was not necessary.
That's correct. I think maybe as a courtesy, Steve spoke to him.
Right, because it was removable. It wasn't permanent. But the mural would be permanent. I, I, I had forgotten about cultural heritage. I can't imagine cultural heritage approving a mural on the west end of the library.
Well, the, the, you know, the interesting thing is there, and it was something that we did look into. There are ways to create a mural so that it is technically removable. What we had, the last, uh, uh, iteration of it was, and we're gonna do this in conjunction with Mission Tile. Is that it would actually be, uh, the mural would be created on a series of tiles and the tiles would be attached to the wall. So that those would be removable without destroying the wall.
Yeah, well, the students are funding this themselves. I doubt they'd have resources for something that is not removable.
And Diana, I don't know if cultural heritage does have jurisdiction over that part of the building, because.
It's a new part of the building.
So it's, maybe, maybe we need to ask Terry, uh, the city attorney for an opinion, but.
I'm sorry, I'm confusing the west with the north. I gotta get my direction straight. I'm sorry, I'm confusing the west with the north. I gotta get my direction straight.
Well, you know, yeah, it's, it's on the, it's on the diamond side and it's on the. Uh, it's, uh, south of the Morton Bay Big Tree, on part of the, of the outside of the building. That is not part of the original, uh, Carnegie building. It's the, the new, the remodel from the nineteen eighties.
Yeah, that's why we had suggested that.
But you guys, Annie, your hand up. Let, let's have Annie.
I had two questions to get them in. Um, I was curious for Dean, what happened with the other mural that you proposed? And then, um, Kathy, do you need a motion from us to start the development of a art, a policy?
No, I, I, what I'll try to do is, um, do some research and, and try to draft some. You know, options, um, to look at next month.
Uh, the mural did not go forward for, for various reasons.
Yeah, so the, the, basically, the mural, the Ray Bradbury themed mural was. Proposed and then this Ray Bradbury themed, uh, glass, fused glass piece was proposed. And two things seemed a little much and then some of the key players in the mural, um. Left town and by that time, the, the art piece was. Seemed likely to happen. So yeah, the mural sort of just fell. By the wayside. It didn't, it wasn't officially something that we decided not to do. Um, but we hadn't gotten to the end of the, the thinking about it stage. You know, we, we were at a point where we thought, well, we need to talk to the neighbors across the street to see if they're okay.
We, we actually done that.
Did you do that, Dean? You guys did talk to them?
We talked to all the neighbors.
Okay, so that was done. Yeah, so, but, but it wasn't officially, it's not something that the library or the board officially.
Then we could, we actually never could get a, a vote scheduled.
This, this just brings up the issue of. That we need to work on our policies because this, it's probably, it may come up again. And, um, I think we do need a policy because in the past, you know, David, we know this and Sally, we know that. We do get gifted art for inside the library and we don't really have. A policy for inside art display. And it just makes sense that we need to do, we need to update this policy. So I think going to Annie's, uh. Comment, if we don't need a motion, then I think, um, we need to, uh. Yeah, get, get this going because, yeah, I think we need to have it in place.
Yeah, and I would. Sorry, Diana, go ahead.
I, I was just gonna mention, I think the first step is determining. Um, where are the boundaries of what appears to be concurrent jurisdiction? So if you develop a policy that, um, do you have the authority to develop a policy? Number one, given that we've got the Public Arts Commission. And if you do have the authority to public art, uh, to develop a policy, then. Is it subject to the review of Public Arts Commission? Um, I think, I think we need to determine that issue as to, um. The extent of a potential conflict first, and then that will inform the development of the policy.
Well, also, do, do, do you guys, some of us have this, this, uh, the book, the. Is that, cause it, that, the library trustee's practical guidebook and, um. Uh, you know, and I've reviewed it and I've looked in it and, uh, you know, the library board has some legal powers. Of property, uh, management of property. So I think, you know, we, we do need to make sure. That we're following, um, you know, the, what, what's our rights under, uh, the legal power of boards? I, David, have you, do, do you remember this book, you know, that we?
I have it, yeah. I make reference to it as well.
Yeah, and I, and I made reference to it to, to Kathy also on the pages that I kind of reviewed again, so.
So I, I can reach out to the city attorney to ask for that question. Um. I mean, this is why on our work plan is to kind of look at our, you, you know, your, the ordinance that. Um, that you guys operate under, uh, the, I was looking at the state statute today. And it's very, it, it allows the, the local jurisdiction, when they create their own ordinance. A lot of leeway, you know, it says, the, the board may be. Basically entirely responsible for the building. The board may be entirely responsible for staffing. I mean, so it, it, it's. The, the state statute allows practically anything. And then what we've done here locally is the piece that now we need to see. You know, Public Arts Commission, uh, the local, the local ordinance for you guys. So we, 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 I think Diana's right. We need to try to figure that out. And this may inform, um, the work plan and looking at that. Piece of it, because I do think the ordinance is, she probably needs to be updated to, to reflect. What the city thinks this body should do. Um, so I will, I will work on that. Um, and I will continue to try to collect some policies from other libraries. And I would just ask you guys to be thinking about kind of generally what, how you feel or, or what you think about. External artworks on the building. Do you have strong feelings one way or the other? Um, if we did have criteria to decide, you know, what's gonna be displayed inside, what's gonna be accepted as a donation? What would those criteria be? Um, so be thinking about that, cause I think that's, you know, ultimately, if we do have a policy. Those are the questions we'll have to answer.
I have to say Kathy, it's been a while since I've looked at the ordinance, but when I did look at an issue regarding the ordinance. I agree, it is ambiguous and I think, um, we would do, i- if we could get that ambiguity removed, I think. That would be a, a big plus.
I do too. I think it would be really helpful for, for all of us, for me, for the board, who, so they know exactly what is your. What is your authority? Um, so yeah, that's on our work plan. It's, it's hard to get to all these things on the work plan with COVID. But we'll get there. So that's, that's.
So moving on, uh, number seven, the, the Tuesday musical of Pasadena request. Did you guys all see that in the agenda package?
I'll try to make this short. The, the Tuesday musical people, um, do concerts at the Pasadena Central Library monthly. And they have pianos there that they now have to move out of that space. They originally asked if we could have their pianos in the community room and I said, no. We couldn't have their pianos in the community room. And, and they said, oh, but could we use your piano and do our free concerts in the community room? And, um, I said that, that the friends would have to weigh in on that, the board would have to weigh in on that. And, and my thinking on this is that, um, right now, I'm, I'm not really. In a place where I'm wanting to consider this. But maybe we re- revisit in six months or something. Um, and I, and I think the friends. One of the restoration concert chairs did have sort of a question about, well, how does that, does that compete with our restoration concert series? I mean, you, you know, it's a free series and the, the Friends series, you could buy tickets. So I think there's some questions that have to be figured out, but I honestly, just from a staffing and, uh. Circumstantial perspective, I, I, now is not the time. So I would like to be able to tell them that, you know, we would revisit this. Um, in six months or something if.
Kathy, excuse me, they, they say their program runs October through June. So presumably what they're shooting for is to do it in October. And then I, I'm assuming that, that they would need to know well in advance of October.
Well, I mean, they, they basically don't have a program if they, I mean, they have nowhere to do it. They, by the time we decide, they may have found someplace else, depending on who babysit their pianos.
I'm actually stunned that they, that the city of Pasadena can't help them find somewhere in Pasadena.
Yeah, they have the, the civic center. You think they might be able to find something.
They've got, they've got lots of.
Yeah.
Buildings they could use.
I mean, I think that if, if in fact, six months from now, they still haven't found a place. And we would be willing to, to have them give free concerts to, for the benefit of our community. They'd be happy to do it if they haven't found a place. I mean, yes, ideally, they'd wanna start in October, but I don't think they're really in a position to. To insist on, on that, you know what I mean? They kind of have to do whatever they can based on who's willing to host them. Um, and maybe not, maybe six months is too long. Where are we? We're, we're June. So, yeah, that's the end of the calendar year. That sounds okay to me. I mean, I, you know, the restoration concerts have something scheduled for September and we don't even know for sure what, what that. Looks like yet. So I'm not really, I'm not in a position, I don't, I don't feel like I'm in a position to, um. To do this with them right now. But it's, if you guys feel differently, let me know and we'll, we'll, you know, we'll do what you think is best.
Well, I, I kind of wanted to hear from Sally from the friends.
Oh.
I'm not eager to do this as well. I haven't talked to the board about it because we hadn't seen this, uh, proposal, but, um. The community room is, the library is not ours. And, um, I'm sure, uh, the friends wouldn't want to, um, share the Steinway.
That the, uh, these people have been in contact with Kay Rosser. They must run in circles.
Really?
I don't know exactly what I, they might, they, I don't know. I, I'm not sure.
But Kay has really resigned now and it would really be to, you know, the committee to talk about that. They have not. Uh, we just met with them recently and no one mentioned that, uh, request. They may not know about it yet.
No, they probably don't. I mean, you know, I was, we would, I, what I explained to them is that we'd have to bring to the friends. Because it's their piano, but that the board of trustees, um, ultimately control the room, so, um.
And the second piano belongs to the friends or the, or?
The library.
So that would be. Piano.
They'd be willing to use that one, but obviously would, would rather not. Um, my understanding is that the restoration concerts, people make decisions about who can use the Steinway based on kind of the. The caliber of the musicians. So, um, you know, that's why the, the recital people don't use it. But that if there is a legitimate, you know, and they, they, you know, they have a legitimate, um, performance series. So the friends might consider letting them use the Steinway, but that's a second hurdle that we would have to cross. But I would like to just put this off for, um, I would say six months and revisit it in, you know, December.
I would be fine with that, but if you want me to put it on the friends, uh, agenda next week.
Um, we should, we could talk, at least talk about it Sally, so that I can.
Also the Steinway where Kay and Kathy will not be at the meeting. It's the new liaisons.
Yeah.
Well, well, you know, the, again, this is a good thing to talk about because in the future, you may get other requests. So again, it might be kind of a. You know, you could talk about like a little bit of a policy in place so that if we get another community request. We can, you, you know, say in response, so that we're not always making up something all the time. That we just have a consistent reply.
Right, and we already do get, I mean, you know, we, we've done many of those kinds of concerts already. And yeah, if you say yes to one person, how do you say no to the other people? I mean, it's, it's, it, you get into this sticky. Territory, so, um.
Kathy, were they seeking to use the community room for free?
I think so, yeah. I mean, yes, they wanted to get free concerts, you know, it's a trade. You know, they're doing something that would benefit our community, um, and then they would use the room for free to do so.
That, that raises additional issues.
Yeah, well, I mean, if, if it's a partnership, they, you know what I mean? We would have to be saying. You know, the South Pasadena Public Library, the Friends of the Library and the Tuesday Musical present. This event. I mean, it would have to be a co-sponsored event for them to use it for free. Um.
Right, well, this also raises that issue of ambiguity because typically for everything else. Um, and this is where it's not clear to me, um, if it's only the library that calls the shots on the library community room. Cause you know, we have tried to raise revenue from the use of our public, um, places. And, uh, so, um, I'm, I'm not typically in order for. A, a facility to be, for every other facility, and it might include the library community room, I don't recall. You need this, you need to be specifically sponsored by the city. Um, so that's another question. Can't, does the library have the authority to authorize use of the library community room? Without, um, also getting conference of city council, which would otherwise be required.
I can find out. I mean, that's certainly not been the practice in the past. It would be very cumbersome if every time we wanted to partner. With, you know, some entity that approaches us and we had, if we had to ask, that would be a lot.
Yeah, well, this, this highlights why the ordinance is really, ordinance cleanup is, is needed.
Yep, that's right. Good. You guys, I, I just wanna be respectful of everybody's time, you know? Eight forty-seven and we have several more items to do, so, um, uh. Kathy, is there anything that we can hold off to next? Is there any, is there a priority that we need to?
Well, I mean, all of these things, I have no updates on any of the work plan items, so you really don't have, I mean, I have no updates unless, um. Sally has any update about the Twenty First Century Committee for the Library, which she'll cover in her own comments.
Yeah, I, 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 I just have one item on the Twenty First Century Committee. I don't know if Sally's gonna cover it or not. But I've had a conversation with Sally about, uh, the friends setting up some kind of electronic archive. Where they can start to gather all of the materials that have been available in the past. Relating to foundations, drawings, plans, uh, policies, procedures, meeting minutes, whatever it is. So, so that, so that I'd see the Twenty First Century Committee is gonna go on for quite some time. And we don't have to keep rediscovering things.
Good idea. I think, yeah, that's a very good point, Dave. So, um, so let's then, um. Eight, nine, ten and eleven, then we'll put off. We had our discussion about number twelve. Is there any other comments though? Regarding eight through twelve, so that we can just move on then to communications? And for me, okay, thank you. Then we'll just move on to, um, communications. And, uh, you know, Kathy already said I, I went to the Maya Kobe talk and it was just wonderful. And I have to admit, I really do like these virtual author talks. I mean, I'm, it's gonna be lovely to get back in person. But, uh, uh, to be able to hear, uh, authors talk from around the country and around the world. It, that's one benefit about this ver- the, the virtual. And then also, and I think, uh, Sally can go in it to more. Sally and I attended Serving With A Purpose, the virtual fundraising mini-conference. And Sally might go into that a little more, but one of the things that I was blown away with is the different ways. Friends are structurally set up, like Long Beach, I think Sally is a foundation.
Foundation, they have money and staff.
Yes, and they have what, four full-time staff?
I think it was.
And Glendora has full-time staff and these other libraries. So I was, that was a real eye-opener for me that these, um, friends are either a foundation.
Right.
And or they have very full-time staff. So that was, uh, that was worthwhile to listen to. And, um, and that, that's, those are my comments. So we'll just kind of move around here. Um, Annie, any comments? Board, a board communications from you, Annie?
Um, no board communications. I think just, uh, I guess a comment. If, if it falls underneath here is just like, I just wanna make sure we're getting you what you need, Kathy, when you raise some of these issues. So, you know, when we close out items, just so we can be clear on what next steps are. And if you need any other like specific information, in case you need like board guidance towards something like in a response to. The, the group, like if you ever need us to like kind of weigh in to help you to be responsible, so it's not you in this moment outside of a policy being set. Um, just let us know. And you know, just I think for, a good way for us to know if, um, having an answer from the board is helpful for you.
Okay, yes, I would let you know for sure. And as far as the Tuesday Musical, I didn't hear anyone say that I couldn't put it off for six months. So I'm putting it off for six months. Um, so I didn't need like a definitive. Yes, Kathy, go ahead. Um, and I will.
I'm not gonna put it on our agenda then if it's.
Well, if you could put it on just so that we can get the friends, uh, I don't wanna dangle them. If the friends are not interested in doing it. Letting them use the Steinway ever, then. I don't want to dangle them. If the Friends are not interested in doing it, letting them use the Steinway ever, then I might as well tell them that now.
Okay. All right. Annie, thank you always for being holistic about everything. So I appreciate that, Annie. I, I, I appreciate that. And Dave, any communications?
Just what a fantastic thing it is to see the library open. And, you know, the day it opened, it was just tremendous. Felt like community was just waiting for that to happen. I happened to go to the San Gabriel Library to pick up a book there and they, I don't know if they dropped their takeout service, but it wasn't being used. And I went in the library and I picked the book up that I had there. And the library was virtually empty of anyone there. And just for the heck of it, I drove back over to South Pasadena because I live here, but I went into our library. And in comparison, our library had ten, ten to something like ten to fifteen people in it. And that was in the middle of an afternoon. So, you know, we're certainly doing something. Like, or Kathy, you're doing a whole bunch of stuff, right?
Well, it's, it's the community. They, they like their library and they like to read and they just love it. And it's also just this, you know, we're this little tiny town. So you can walk by and stop by. It's different than when you have to drive somewhere, you know?
Yep.
Thank you, David.
Yeah, that's nice. Thank you, David. Dean?
I'm going to be the opposite of Annie, who was very global and holistic. I'm going to be very narrow and specific. The, the Onyanta Club has after a decade switched its sergeant-at-arms. And the Sergeant-at-Arms takes care of all of its records. And the new Sergeant-at-Arms, Pete Giuliani, has been digging assiduously through the records and finding amazing stuff. And a lot of commentary in the meeting minutes about major events that have taken place internationally, nationally, state and local. And there was a question raised at the last board meeting as to whether the library would be interested in those papers and, and how that would take place. And I remember a few months ago, we had part of a conversation about acquiring works and, and books and letters of individuals. So I wanted to just throw that out there. I don't know if that's something we should maybe revisit in the next month or two. Because I don't recall that we actually moved the needle on that discussion. We just had that discussion.
Well, yeah, we definitely accept, would accept, you know, a collection like that. So you, you would just reach out to Olivia or to me.
Oh, no, I, I, I told them I was very sure that the library would accept it, but it raised in my own mind that I don't, and, and correct me if I'm wrong. I don't think we ever actually capped that conversation because we were going to, we're, I believe that what we discussed is that we were going to come up with some guidelines, kind of like what we just talked about regarding art and other areas.
Yeah, you're correct. We didn't close that conversation. We, we did compete the guidelines and I was supposed to send them to you and, and I didn't. So I will, in fact, I just saw that piece of paper that said, send deed of gift. I will try to get that done.
All right, Dean. Okay. Now you're in competition with Annie, keeping us, you know, focused here on the, the big, the big and the, the big and the narrow. And, okay, I think I've got all the board members covered. Diana, Mayor Mahmoud, Council Liaison. Any communication?
No, you've heard from me plenty, but I, I do think it's very interesting for, for Long Beach to have a foundation. You know, Long Beach has a population of almost a half million. It's the second largest city, only second to the city of LA in the county. But Glendora, Glendora is not that much larger than us. And to me, it really highlights the need for the formation of the Twenty First Century Committee.
Well, and Glendora, they're in their fundraiser, they had a virtual fundraiser. They raised over a hundred thousand dollars.
Yes.
Glendora.
What?
Glendora. Sally and I were blown away.
It was usually in person, but they had this all virtual with auctions and so much. Yeah.
And, and no, and no fancy entertainment.
No.
That is like mind blowing, Bianca. That's just.
Just Glendora. I mean, I just.
Was there any, was there any like aspect of the fundraising that stood out? Or was it just every?
Yeah. Well, you know, you know what Glendora has that we don't have? They have big corporations out in Glendora. And so they large businesses and corporations underwrote or donated. And that's something.
They got ten and twenty thousand dollar donations.
Yeah, and that's.
I think to begin eighty thousand.
Yeah. And that's something that.
I'm sorry, someone gave eighty thousand?
Altogether. Yeah. I think that's what it was. Yeah.
Yeah.
Where is that one?
So, but Sally, this is, this is your, so now it goes right into you. So Friends.
Okay, I'll be quick. As you know, we had a highly successful donation drive where we received thousands of used books, still getting them every day. And we're going to have a, a dollar or less book sale, June twenty-sixth from ten to three in the community room. The chairs are working with the outgoing chairs to process price and shelve all the donations that we have. And the Last Chance Books are sold on the first floor now and the bookstore opens along with the state, right? Because June fifteenth. The library staff says every day people are calling to say, when is the bookstore open? In regard to the Restoration Concerts Committee, we have really wonderful news. The Friends Executive Leadership met with the two liaisons taking over from Kay and Kathy. And we have reached unanimous consent on all of the provisions that we wanted to see going forward, starting with this upcoming series. And I'm consulting with Kathy on certain items that she might want to see added to that about policies within the library that they have to adhere to, like applying to be volunteers, right, Kathy? If they're working onsite at the concerts. So we are really thrilled. The quarterly newsletter came out and on schedule and PJ worked on that, learning as she went, constant contact. And we had almost sixty-three percent open rate on that. And as everyone knows, you know, at the city council meeting, we had four Friends members and two library board members give public comment on the budget with favorable impact. And as you know, elicited support from Chris Bray, followed by an article in the South Pasadena. And the Exploratory Twenty First Century Committee meets on this fourteenth. The idea of upgrading the teen room is being explored. And the committee members have met Kathy there and had a tour of it. One Friends board member, Jean Zenas, is committed to getting design work committed. Either through her family's company, ThinkWell, which is a global design and production agency, or another avenue. And as Dave mentioned, received a request from him to create archives of all this materials relating to foundation or Twenty First Century Committee. And that brings up a whole conversation that we've had in the Friends. We have archival materials sitting in the library going back years and I've researched, so it's not just that one file. Really, we need all of our files. So I've done some survey or search on software for nonprofits for storage of documents. And I'm going to confer with Olivia because the librarian at the reference desk said she's filing and storing all of the materials in the library. So Dave, I will work on that. In regards to the developer fee, Kathy, while we were talking, I just looked it up on your email. The, the growth requirement fund or whatever it's called is five hundred and forty-three thousand, four hundred and thirteen. And they expect fifty-five thousand this year and forty thousand the following year. So the two Friends, PJ and myself are on that committee with you all. So we're eager to collaborate with you. And as Bianca mentioned, we attended a fundraising seminar for Friends groups, trustees, foundations. And there was a concept of an Amazon storefront. I wasn't clear about how you did that, but what they, bottom line was they're not really breaking even. Because, you know, you got to package the books and all of that. And then they had a, something selling used items and jewelry bling for books. They raised ten thousand dollars selling donated things. So then we, we heard about six, six others. Letters from Santa, grab bag, book sale for five dollars. I mean, these didn't bring a lot of money. Virtual trivia night, like Beth has done. And then the night on the plaza, Glendora, got raised more than a hundred thousand dollars. So good ideas. That's, that's my report.
Thank you, Sally.
Sally?
Yes.
Well, Diana raised her hand before I barged in. So go ahead, Diana.
A question for you, Sally. Who are the new Restoration Concert Liaisons?
Janet Irvin and Lori Astle.
Thank you.
And they are, you know, adding new people to the committee because several people are leaving. And one of them is Betty Amerhenian.
That is awesome.
Dining from Wispah.
Oh, wow.
I don't know if that's public, but she told me today she's joining Restoration Concerts.
Hey Sally?
Yes, Dean.
In, in your, no, I did not say, hey Siri. My phone just perked up. In the most recent fundraising gala, whatever the Friends did last, how much did we raise?
Sorry, I missed that. Could you say it again, please?
Oh, shut up.
What fundraising gala?
That's what I was going to say. I don't.
So has the Friends, have the Friends not done anything like what Glendora and others do or?
I don't, to my knowledge, but I've not.
Okay. Because my question was, was leading towards, because you said that they had eighty thousand in corporate. So they really only raised twenty thousand from the general population. It's still a lot of money, but it, it's not as daunting of a concept.
Right.
So anyway.
Friends has, has the holiday weekend gift wrap, the special, the gift book sale.
Not gift wrapped. It's books, actually.
Okay, well, yes, but, but the books are gift wrapped, as I recall.
Wrapping is right. Yeah.
Maybe, maybe Friends should, should consider, you know, talk with, with PJ and Jean and, and about doing a gala of some kind.
I, they're, they'd love to.
Sam Marino has one. I know because I've been invited by someone who must be on their board. And I don't know how much money they raised, but I think it would be worthwhile inquiring.
There's a lot of pent-up demand for in-person activities over the next, you know, year, I'm sure.
Okay, I will bring that to the board.
Dean, when, when Spark, when we did our galas, did it, we did okay. Didn't Spark do okay?
Yeah, we, we do, we do pretty well. Not crazy, but pretty well. You know, the, the, the last one, we, we sort of paired off. It'd be, there'd be one where you, like the hundred by a hundred, you know, where everybody get, you get a hundred people giving a hundred dollars. Well, you already got ten grand before anybody does anything else. You know, something like that where there's a buy-in that, that comes with the ticket is, is a great opportunity to, to, you know, really give yourself a good floor so that then any other kinds of auctions or donations or sponsorships can really lift you up a lot. But, you know, we, the, the, the challenge, I think, would be, you know, the library park itself would be a lovely space to do an outdoor event, but then how do you keep out those who haven't paid a hundred or two hundred dollars to be there? That, that would be the challenge.
Yeah.
It can be handled.
Yeah, yeah.
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 But I mean, you know, the, the Morton fig, you know, putting some fairy lights up into that thing, you, you immediately got a magical location.
That's a great, great idea. Right in our own yard.
Literally in, in, in the library's backyard.
In the yard. Yeah.
And I was going to say, like, I don't know if you've gone through and done like a potential like donor list or like high net worth individual list. Sally, I'm happy to like talk to you offline too, but there's a lot of like tools nonprofits use to like kind of gauge what the giving potential is in a certain community. And I feel like in the city, there is that potential. I don't know that's been tapped, but you know, like there's some major celebrities that live in the city. And I don't know if it's just the parents of the kids who are in school, but there's some major folks that live here and I think it takes time to go through and you have a lot more potential because there's not as much upfront cost of like selling a book for five dollars and having to wrap it. And, you know, just.
Right, right. No, I would love to talk with you online because in our years of preparing this, we did, we did compile a potential donor list. But those are probably not the people you know, the, you know, the young parents of people in your neighborhood. They're more of the older generation. So we have a list of maybe fifteen people or so, but and there is such a thing, as you know, feasibility study, that's before you do a campaign. That's what our fundraiser member of our Twenty First Century, we've talked to her about that. And of course, those things cost money. So we're talking about that. We haven't gotten to it. But I would love to talk to you about a potential donor list.
I don't have all the answers, but I definitely have some tools to offer. So, yeah.
Okay. I, I appreciate that very much.
I love the idea, the picture that Dean painted of the, of the park.
Well, good. Yeah, yeah, Dean. Thank you.
This got us excited at nine oh eight. Vaughn, Dave, anything from the liaison of the Friends?
You know, nothing to add to Sally's report. She covered everything.
Thank you. Sally, you do, you do do a good report. Thank you. Yeah. And I, and this is being recorded. So good.
I won't say you said doo-doo.
Right. And, and Kathy, any further communications?
Yeah, I don't want to keep anybody any longer, but I did want to mention that our children's librarian Judy Mead was honored by the SPUSD PTA Council with an honorary, an honor, honorary service award, which is given to recognize outstanding service to children and youth in the community. So, you know.
Let's send that to the media, girl.
Well, I sent it to city council, but I don't think I.
That, that's the kind of thing that should be publicized. Council honorary service awards are, they're handed out, but they're not like, you know.
Well, I kind of assumed that the PTA Council would be publicizing who won their awards and I have not seen it in the newspaper. So I was sort of.
If we don't do it, who will?
Yeah.
We can do it.
Yeah.
Um. That's great. Yeah. And then I don't know if I mentioned last time that a number of our staff had, were presented at the California Library Association Conference that I mentioned.
No.
Yeah, very pleased with them. What did we have? It was May eleventh to fourteenth. They submitted several different proposals and they were accepted. So Olivia presented, Judy presented, and part-time librarian Anne Armocost presented, and they spoke on a whole bunch of different topics. They had a one-city mini-stories, a new programming approach session, demystifying the purchasing of comics, archiving without an archive. Sapphic Graphics, the past, present and future of LBPQ comics and spooky books for children's and teens. So they really had a, a strong presence at the my conference and I was really pleased with them. It's not always easy to do that kind of extra work on top of your regular. So I want to just let you know that.
Well done. Kathy, you, you said it was the children's librarian who got that award, right?
Yes.
And we just remodeled the entrance to the children's library. So those two things combined would make a very appropriate press release.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. And I think then we can maybe add to some of the other things that highlights from the library staff, the, the conference stuff. I, I just think it's, it's good for the public to know how busy the, the library staff is and what they're doing and what they have been doing. Yeah. So.
Yeah.
All right. Well, thank you. Any other last comments, questions? All right, well, thank you. Any other, uh, last comments, questions? All right, well, thank you, everybody. Then I'm going to adjourn this meeting at nine eleven, and our next meeting then will be on July eighth. I have a question. Are we continuing virtual meetings then?
Let's wait and see. Like I said, Governor Newsom extended the, um, the emergency order, whatever it's called, so that cities have a little more time to transition back to in-person. But I would like to see us go back to in-person. If everybody's vaccinated and nobody has an issue with meeting in-person, I think we could. But we have to wait and see what the city does to do. Like, you know, it's a public meeting, so we have to, it has to be accessible to everybody. So we'll see what the guidelines are on the fifteenth, and then we'll see what the city decides. And I did mean to mention that the new city manager will, will come to the next meeting to introduce herself to you guys. So we'll have her at the top of the agenda next month.
All right, well, then you'll let us know whether we'll continue virtual or we'll be in-person.
I will let you know.
But till then, we're, uh, we're.
That, that does raise a good question that typically, I think the Library Board of Trustees has gone dark, at least this is my recollection, in August. Are you planning to go dark? I think some of it was because of a lack of quorum sometimes, but at the times, it was just because there was nothing pressing, and the Library Board chose to take a bye.
I guess if, if people are gonna be available in either July or August or September because of vacations, you could let Sean know. And then we would know if we're, uh, lacking quorum at any meeting. And as far as whether we have business to conduct, I, I don't know yet. I'm assuming we probably would, but I don't know yet. I don't think we typically, as a matter of course, have a dark meeting. It's usually because someone's not available and we realize we don't have a quorum.
Well, and if we don't have a, a lot of, uh, agenda items, maybe we could work on some of these, um, the, our, the work plans. You know, if, if we're gonna, if we're gonna meet, maybe we could spend some time on some, because we the, you know, we don't have a lot of time, um, during these meetings to get to everything, so.
My, my experience over the lo, the last four years was it was August was typically the one where most people, where there was three people gone and therefore there wasn't a quorum. But we did meet on August as well.
So let Sean Faye know if you're not gonna be available to attend the summer meetings, and then we can let you all know. And I have a couple of things that I will send the email, just because I think we're at the end of our, our rope, all of us here tonight. So I have a couple of other things, but I'll shoot it, shoot you an email, okay?
Thank you very much. All right, well, good night, everybody. Then we'll, uh, adjourn the meeting. Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Thank you all for your input.